Okay, this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is July 26th. It is 6 o'clock. It is officially open. First would be the waiving of the reading of the Zoom. Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the Treasury Warrant 21W-28, 22W-2, and Payroll 22WPW-2.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on payroll? All right. Roll call.
Aye.
Benoit, aye?
Aye.
Wait, Benoit.
And Nichols, aye, excluding any COA wages. All right. Next, first we'll do the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and liberty just as for all. Thank you. All right, and do we have any public comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes from July 12th and July 19th. I don't know if you want to take them separately. Someone wants to make a motion?
I wasn't here during the whole meeting, so I can't.
For which one?
For the 12th.
So, okay, so you want to do them separately? Do I have a motion on the meeting minutes from the 12th?
I have a motion to approve minutes as written.
Waitman, seconds.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Aye.
Benoit, aye?
I say aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye? And then we have the minutes of the, I mean, the 19th.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from the 19th.
Second.
For clarification, that was the, um, roundtable, right? The review and roundtable and everything?
Yes.
Aye.
Benoit, aye?
I say aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye? All right, thank you. So, was there anybody for a public comment? Okay. All right, so first on the agenda, we don't have anything under awards, presentations, or petitions, so we will go to departments. Um, what's Sarah? Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you. I just want to sit here, huh?
Yeah, whatever you're comfortable with. So, we just wanted to have departments heads come in once in a while, just kind of update us on what's going on in the departments, you know, events coming up, any issues, that kind of thing.
Okay, perfect. Well, it's been a long time since I've been able to chat about Safe Place or Clubhouse, but we finally got approval from Dr. McCall back in June that before and after programs can resume for this upcoming school year. So, we are ready to go for October, not October, August 31st, which is the first day of school. As of today, there are no COVID restrictions in place for the schools. That may or may not change. His only request is that if there are any restrictions, we have to follow both Department of Early Education and Care, which is our licensing authority, and DSS's regulations since we're in the school. But that won't be an issue. We'll be able to handle that. We started registration for both programs last Tuesday, so less than a week ago, and Safe Place at Naqog is already at about 80% capacity, and Glenwood is at about 60, 65%. Ideally, we'll stay at about 85% for both, leaving some slots open, so we can offer drop-in care, we can work with families that are on rotating schedules and stuff like that. Staffing's been our biggest issue. I have four staff members not coming back that were with us pre-COVID, so that is making it really difficult to offer that early care that we started back in 2019. As of right now, we can't offer the 7 to 7:30 care. I don't have the staff, even with myself physically being there and counting in numbers, it's not going to work. So, right now, we'll open at 7:30, and if I can get more staff in, we certainly will offer it, even if it's halfway through the school year. We did hire two new people, but they are high school seniors, so they're only available after school.
If I may, can I?
Sure.
Is it, um, are there licenses required for that, or for staffing? I'm just, for anybody that's listening or watching later, if they're interested.
Right. There are not. Grouply, I mean, assistant group leader, you have to be 18 years old. A group leader, you have to be 18 years old with either experience in a daycare or some like child growth and development courses, and that's all we're looking for. Not looking for site coordinators or anything like that, so.
And where are those posted?
On the town's website.
And, and do you have them on REC and stuff too?
Yes, yep, they're on ours. We've posted it on Facebook multiple times. It was posted in the landmark back in beginning of July, I believe, and I've reached out to Amy Harrington at the high school, who handles the early childhood program up there. So, hopefully, we'll get some more. Both programs are going to go through relicensing in September. We have those dates scheduled, so we are way overdue for that, since we haven't had it since 2018. And then on Friday, I found out that the Department of Early Education and Care was awarded a federal childcare stabilization grant for $298 million, and all licensed programs in the state are going to be eligible. It's not a competitive grant. It really just requires us applying for it, and it's going to be six months of direct care payments. You get $500 per licensed slot, so between the two programs, I have 104 slots. So, we would be eligible for $52,000 over a six-month time period. And then you can get additional funding, depending on how many staff you have and if you have subsidized slots. We used to have enough staff that we would get the increased amount. I don't know where we'll be come September, and we don't have enough subsidized slots. But even if we could get the $52,000, that would certainly be amazing. It can be used for personnel costs, utilities, maintenance, PPE, cleaning and sanitation, purchasing new goods and services, so there's a whole list of things that can be used for.
How do you determine the number of subsidized slots? You said.
We have to hold a contract with Childcare Resources, which is through the state, so we have the contract. I think right now, we have three kids on the state vouchers for summer camp, and I have three registered for Safe Place, the same families. So, we can take more, it's just there's not as many families out here that are on those sort of slots.
Thank you.
But other than that, the grant application is not out. They said they expect it to be released by mid-August due to beginning of September. So, that's about it for Safe Place and Clubhouse.
Okay. And Ron?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I want to take this opportunity to really to thank Sarah. As you know, with COVID, we had a difficult time with both Safe Place and Recreation operating. Well, the person who does Recreation was out on unemployment. Sarah came through and was kind of doing both jobs, and again, Recreation wasn't busy, but no objection whatsoever. She carried both sides of the house, so to speak, and did a great job. Whenever I asked her to do something, I always get great reports and really great productivity from her in terms of documentation stuff she gave her. So, I appreciate that very much, and I wanted to point that out to the board. I just want to say, I was talking to them today, I was talking about doing a lunch for employees, sort of an appreciation day. It's been a tough year for our team, as you know, and it turns out that they were also thinking about doing the same thing. So, we decided on August 26th, we're probably going to do a picnic here at Town Hall in the back near the pool area for employees and for immediate family, and they have like just hamburgers and hot dogs and stuff, and I'm going to donate money and work together with Recreation, we're both going to put together. So, I think it'll be great to show our appreciation, not only to serve with all the town employees who did a great job. So, again, Thursday, August 26th, we'll be doing after-work, we'll be doing a outdoor picnic for employees and immediate family.
I know Karina met with some of her staff from the Snack Shack and stuff to have a conversation while I was on vacation, so I wasn't aware of that when you and I had talked earlier.
Yeah, I'm probably going to bring my RV outside, and I have grill and everything, so I'm going to be cooking out there, and we'll have a little bit of music, and the pool will be open and stuff. So, I think it'll be enjoyable time and give everybody a chance to sort of come back to life after what's been a real crazy time, so.
If I, and that was, if I may, that was my, I wanted to confirm that you had talked with Karina and REC and Safe Place, because I thought in the past, I thought REC kind of had done that as like a REC thing, and so I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't...
No, we're going to work together as a team on it. I talked to Karina today, I went down to the pool and I was looking at my own idea, and learned that she had did in the past today. So, we just had to work together and decide to do some things, and I think it'll be a nice event. We want to encourage more employees to come, because last year they had people, but not as well. So, this year, I'm going to be really encouraging our staff to come out and attend it.
So, I want to thank you as well, Sarah, on behalf of the board for stepping in. We appreciate that. I do see that Karina's on. I don't know if she has any comments. I know she wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, I know, sir.
Karina, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I know she had sent Beth something. I have a copy of what she sent Beth. I don't know if she's not, I don't know if she did send me anything.
Can you see if her mic is on or anything, Tamika?
Shows that she's on mute.
She sent it to Beth today?
She did, and she sent me a copy as well.
Beth's not in today, so that's why the wall's going to respond to it.
Well, he just want to give us an overview, and then she ends up...
Sure. So, as far as summer camp goes, we are on week six out of week seven. Camp ends next Wednesday. We've had 80 campers every week with 14 staff with waiting lists for every week, so it has been a busy summer. Camp was cut short two and a half weeks this year due to lack of space. The school is usually available till the second week of August, but they're having their floors done, so they're kicking us out actually as of this Friday. Next week, we're kind of making use of like the library, the basement of the Town Hall, the tent, and cross our fingers for good weather. And, you know, that's been a huge issue. We've had a lot of families, like, you know, there's two weeks without camp, and then there's the normal two weeks when there is never any camp. So, it's almost a month of no camp for parents, and that's really difficult when you have younger children. We've had a great camp season, but we've had some limitations that have been an issue, you know, storage space. We were kicked out of the basement of the Town Hall due to all the COVID stuff being down there, which is understandable. Everything was put into those storage bins, then we transported everything over to Naqog. It's just kind of a disaster with everything everywhere. It's hard to access everything, so that's been hard. And the weather has certainly not been on our side this summer. But we've had some really good events over at camp. We've had the escape room, a talent show, an all-camp birthday party. We had weekly yoga and library trips. This week is Color War Olympics, and they've had a spree day, so the campers have all had fun, so that's really what matters to us. We've had Izzy Lewis from the library, she's been great. We've been bringing the kids over in groups, and they love that. As far as the pool's concerned, we hosted the Water Safety Instructor Corps, so three of REC employees completed the course, as well as six others from other towns. And completion of this course certifies them to teach the swim lessons. So, this summer, we ran three sessions of lessons instead of two. We did an early one before school was out. They've pretty much all been full with waiting lists. Session two, the weather was horrible, like two-thirds of the classes could not run, so we offered refunds, or we squeezed the kids in where we could in session three. And then with us obviously being non-operational for the past year, we haven't really been able to address any issues over at the pool. Replacement of lights is really the only thing we could do, and that's because we had to replace them in order to get our inspection and open. So, you know, in the next couple of years, getting our revenue back up and fixing some of the main things over there will be a concern. And then obviously, the Member Appreciation Week and the Employee Night in August, as you had said, Karina spoke with you about earlier. And we haven't had any major events. The bike and doll carriage parade that we were supposed to have at the Fourth of July was canceled also because of the rain. We did like a little virtual thing, people could submit their photos. We issued prizes and coupons for ice cream at the Snack Shack. So, at this point, we don't have any events planned. We kind of want to get through summer, get before and after school started, and go from there.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Just personally, thank you, Sarah, for everything.
You're welcome.
We've been email buddies. And she's been very responsive, and it's all, I mean, it was personal, because my granddaughter's in camp, and she's left everyone, everyone of it. And she assures me that the color wars will come out of her clothes. We said, I said, you've been warned. Don't break, don't go with anything that you don't want.
I just want to recognize Karina. I know she was, you know, laid off throughout most of COVID, and she came back, but she, honestly, she's been working 50, 60-hour a week work week. She's at Naqog at 6:30 in the morning. Most days, she's either over there or at the pool, or in the office till 5:30. I drive by at night or on like a random Saturday at noon time, she's over here doing something, so she's going above and beyond. That camp would not be what it is without her.
Yeah. Are you, are you on, Karina?
I am now, I'm sorry. I was trying to figure out how to turn on my microphone. How are you?
Good. Uh, thank, thank you.
I'm doing the Snack Shack DJ shopping run.
Okay. Well, I think Sarah went through like a lot of your high points and stuff, and, you know, on behalf of the board, thank you as well for, for your work during the summer, keeping the programs going. Ron, did you have a question?
Just briefly, I had an opportunity a couple of different times to go down in the pool area, and I thanked all the staff, you know. As you guys know, it's very difficult to get staff to do anything right now. There's a lot of need for, for young people to work in stores and everything across the state, so it was great to talk to the staff down there, and they were very appreciative that I went over and thanked them. But it was also great to see the kids. As you said, Mr. Chairman, the kids are having a great time, and I know Karina and Sarah said, it's fun to watch them. I mean, they're having a blast, and, and it was really nice to see Karina was down there making sure everybody was doing their thing, and she was talking to the kids. It was just a very warm kind of feeling, which you want in a summer camp. The kids loved it, and they felt like, you know, people wanted them to be there, and it was kind of family-like. It was kind of interesting to see, so kudos to the team, all of them, the Recreation people that are involved, and thanks to the parents for letting them be part of the town. I think it was great. Karina's doing excellent jobs, so I think it, it's a very good program. Frankly, I, you know, I heard the price, I thought it was expensive, and then I heard what other people charge, and it's really cheap. It's really something that helps the families in town in terms of the cost factor, and they get to put their summer in a really safe environment for the summer, an enjoyable environment, and a price that's reasonable to afford, so I think it's a great program for the town. There you go. There you go.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ron, I mean, Karina and Sarah both. I know it's not been easy in following the ever-changing guidelines and everything, and so I know you guys are kind of self-sustaining financially, so it's great that you're able to offer these programs at a reasonable cost to the families and not, the town doesn't incur any additional expenses, so I think that that is a big highlight also. And I know it's a tremendous amount of work, and you guys really, with the, from the themes down to the, the day-to-day, you know, what's going on with the weather and having Plan A, B, and C and everything. So, I think one thing I've realized is really, it's not new, but space. We don't have enough space for all the activities that we want to run. And, and I think that not necessarily that we town want to run, but that our residents want us to run. And so, it's part of those hard conversations, I guess, that we need to, to have, because we can't control the weather, and we know we're, we live in New England, there's a chunk of the winter that we can't be outside. So, yeah.
That's our number one challenge on the slate.
All right. All right, well, thank you both. Like I said, it's nice just to hear kind of what's going on with the departments, and I appreciate you coming on and updating us.
Thank you.
So, if there's anything that comes up, obviously, let us know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Love you ladies.
Thank you.
Chief?
Do you want to go first?
No, I'm not here.
She's not, she's not here first.
No, no, no. Thank you.
But that's, that's very polite of you. You think I'm that, I'm that rude?
No.
I wouldn't ignore Becky.
Yes.
Who put her in the corner?
It is nice to be in person, finally back off the Zoom, so I appreciate you asking us to come today. Just kind of give you an overview of where we are, where we're going. Give you update on the FEMA reimbursements and the FEMA updates. As you know, care funding, we're in our closing out process. We're in the reconciliation with FEMA reimbursement for some of CARES projects and reconciling the CARES funding with the state. We have until the end of this year to get that done. We're working very hard on that. So, all CAREF funding projects are over, we're done spending money, and now we're just trying to reconcile everything on that. As you know, we ran the regional FEMA vaccine clinics. That will start to close out in October, as FEMA reimbursements will end on September 30th, barring a crazy extension, but everything seems to be going pretty well in our area as of right now. You may or may not be aware, we have started clinics again. We started last night from 5:00 to 7:00, and then this morning from 9:00 to 11:00. And then three weeks from now, on August 15th and 16th, the same Sunday and Monday times, we'll be following up with their second dosing. The goal is, is we're trying to target the kids that are training 12 over the summertime to get them done, and their second dose done two weeks before school starts.
So, you're doing that here at the library?
We're doing it here.
And you're only doing, you're not doing the Johnson &amp; Johnson, just that's two, two doses, or?
Yeah, so unfortunately, Pfizer is the only approved for anyone under age at. So, right now, the age limit for our Pfizer is 12 and over, and so again, we're just trying to target that age group for the kids going back to school and kids going to college. And any adult that is, have changed their mind, they're always welcome to come anytime. So, we are working on that in border health stuff, whatnot.
Yeah, as of, and I don't know as of the last couple hours, but we're at zero cases right now. It's been sporadic, every now and then we'd get one or two, but, and then usually the same household, but we've been pretty good lately. So, we, you know, fingers crossed, we haven't seen a whole lot. We were just looking, as of last Thursday, Rutland ages 12 and up, we were 80% one dose and 76% fully vaccinated. And actually, ironically, the, the one age group that is driving down our number is the, the 12 to 18-year-olds, where, you know, there's some parents who obviously haven't decided to get it done yet, or, you know, they're, they're just waiting for, if, whether they need it or not. So, I, I'm pretty sure 65 and up were as close to 100% done as possible. And, and, you know, 45 were, you know, in the nineties, easy. So, we've, you know, we've pretty much taken care of our town pretty well, and, you know, it's just the, the younger kids that we have to, you know, try to get it done.
And the ones that you're doing right now, is that open to everyone, or is that just in town that you're doing?
It's open to everyone.
It's open to everyone, so.
Yep.
If, oh, sorry.
So, that's pretty much it on the FEMA side of things.
I, I don't know if Leah had a question.
I don't know if this falls under this, but if, if when the vaccines are approved for the younger age groups, will, is there plans to bring back vaccination clinics in town to assist with that, you know, the five plus or whatever? And I know there's a little bit of up in the air as to the timeline and everything. It seems like now it's pushed out even a little bit farther, because they're requesting additional data.
Yeah.
And everything, but I wasn't sure if the FEMA money for vaccinations is kind of ending in October.
Right.
Is it possible that there will be another, like, how's that looking?
Yeah, as you are aware, because we're only really eight months into vaccine, that there's really not enough hard data to, I mean, Pfizer's already come out and asked for approval for booster, and CDC and FDA said, no, we're not going to address that at this point, because there's just not enough data long-term to see when it is appropriate, whether it's one year out like your flu shot, things of that nature. We also, you know, here we are, we're already planning our flu clinic for early November. Yep. I think it's usually the weekend after Halloween, so we're in the process of starting to gear up for that. Whether a booster will be available at that point, we will know more, and if they lower the age at that point, we'll probably be doing it in that type of setting.
Yep.
And if we get into that, it would be local only. It would be just, we're not going to go wide-scale after that. As you know, all the large-scale vaccine sites in the state have closed, and then gone back to the smaller regional, local sites, because the vaccine is now readily available, and you can get it pretty much any pharmacy or a doctor's office as well, so.
But I wasn't sure if the town was planning on, on doing kind of something for, and I know there's a lot of still unknowns.
Correct.
We actually, this week was planned, we were thinking, you know, this is, you know, two months ago, we were saying, well, this could be the week where they say five and up or six and up, so that's why we planned for this week to make sure we could get them, and they'd be done two weeks before school started, but, you know, obviously been pushback. But we, we have full intentions. I mean, obviously, you know, the federal government and state government have, could change their mind and do it a different way, and then we, we follow that.
No, I appreciate all the work, the, the whole vaccine team has been, I know you guys and Rich are kind of the spearheading minds, but I know it's a team, a huge team effort, and I appreciate the work that you guys and the hours and the sleepless nights and everything. So, thank you for everything from, yeah.
Just want to come out and make sure to slip in at first, but just, that was really the only thing I want to talk about, is the amazing cooperation between both of you and Rich, and, and even more importantly as well, reaching out to seniors and library director. The community center directors have both added to this team, and they've been phenomenal. That's why we've had the success we have, because these five people have been particularly incredible among staff members too. Those five just fantastic in terms of the regional approach to this, so.
It was absolutely a community effort, and, you know, really a talented employee effort to get this done.
It was very well received, and just, not only just the whole setup, but the way it was handled, the way the people were treated, they were very happy with the customer service, so we appreciate that.
It was an enjoyable process, so.
Giving people shots?
Yeah.
So, onto the state level, to MEMA. During this whole pandemic, a lot of things came to light that brought, you know, some situations that, what do you do if the town administrator got COVID and was out for extended period of time? Or treasurer collector, you know, who's going to do that job? So, MEMA is pushing to come up with a continuity of operations plan, and we're going to really be defining that and who your second and third would be taking in that positions. So, I'll be visiting each department to come up with, you know, a priority list of, you know, who falls next in line, or succession plan or whatever, if something were ever to happen. So, once that is all ironed out, I will bring it forward to the board for you to review and to sign off, so we can get that to MEMA headquarters and get that all to things.
So, will that, that include like sites for like warming sites or for emergencies like we have with the ice storm?
Yeah, so that falls under the town's emergency management plan.
Would that wrap into that?
That will tie into, there'll be a page in that master plan. Once we get that first one done, then we're going to really dive into, because it was very weak on, you know, pandemic or health-related emergencies that really drove a lot of things, and we need to really address some of that. And I think what was very obvious that came out of this whole process was me as fire chief, I also hold the title as emergency management director. And normally, during a natural disaster, you know, tornado, flooding, hurricane, whatever, it's usually a one- to two-week process, it's not a big disruption. But I've served in that capacity for, really for 18 months, and that was probably 90% of everything I did every day. And it just became very daunting and concerning that, imagine, letting something go that I should be paying more attention to on the fireside, but if it wasn't for the fire department staff and the officers within the department to step up and really, you know, take some of the burden of that for me during this process, it's been very appreciative, and it made the whole process work as well as it did. But it is just something that, whether at some point, you know, if we ever created another full-time position with the department, that would be their main role, would be that, that key piece, that they would be assigned to and focused on that, but that's way down the road. Before you, I wanted an email, but someone decided to print out, you know, 30 pages of documents. That was my fault. I had posted a few months ago on our fire department Facebook page, is last fall, we had a ISO came in to town and audited the fire department, the water department, and the communications department, to determine the level of fire protection that we offer to the community. It's done every 10 years, and the rating that you achieve from this is what determines your fire insurance premium ratings and what, how much you pay. So, we went through the whole process, we got notified right around Christmas that we had dropped our rating from a class five to a class four. that we had dropped our rating from a class five to a class four. Obviously, a class one is the best. What that does is if you now, as your insurance premiums are coming up for renewal each year, just make sure you notify them that your Rutland's now a class four town. And you should see about an eight percent reduction in your annual insurance premium for your home. If we were, so I got all the numbers from town assessors. If you took all the single family homes, duplexes, mobile homes, everyone, the annual savings to the taxpayer, if everyone's premiums were paid, is two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in the annual savings that homeowners aren't paying because of what they've invested in the fire department.
So Ron, that's probably something we should highlight on somewhere on the website or somehow get that information out to residents so that they're aware of it, so they all take it into the insurance.
Yes, and you know, I've been pushing it. People have been calling and I've been sending them the information.
First of all, just so you know in your books, it's the second part of item number one seventy is what he's talking about. I flashed it. Chief, could you give me a little summary of that? I haven't posted of that.
Yes, absolutely.
I'll get it up on the internet.
It's a very long document, so you have it. You can go through it. And it rates each section and where we're weak and where we're doing well. And you know, there's a lot of things that the water department makes up forty percent of the point value of the hydrant system. So some of the things that they can improve upon will help us in our rating. And that was part of the fire department's goals and objectives was to work with the water and the communications department.
So Joe has this obviously as well.
Yes, Joe has it.
So maybe at some point, have you reviewed this yet, Ron?
I've glanced it, but I haven't read it.
So after you have, if you're reviewing, you might want to just, you know, sit down with Seth and Joe and.
Matter of fact, maybe it's something that could tie into the American funds in terms of certain things Joe's doing. So we'll have to look.
And then if there's any highlights that you feel the board should discuss, then maybe you can bring it back to us after you talk to.
No, it's because I just got it tonight, so I haven't had a lot of time to look at it.
And if you want me to continue into.
Waging?
Wage laying.
Then that, you'd have to ask the chairman because that's later on the agenda.
Can I, before, back up to the FEMA.
Sure.
The plan that you're going to be instituting or coming up with for us to look at, will that include things that training would need to take place because, you know, levels of training?
Correct. So each person will have to have a certain level of NIMs training and stuff like that.
An estimate of if it's, if it's just internal training versus cost.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Seth is talking about it's part of the one seventy regarding fire wages. Does anybody have any objection to take that out of order so we can finish up with the fire chief? Okay.
Okay. All right. So the budget impact for FY twenty-two. The total cut from the budget was twenty-nine thousand nine hundred. Did some staffing reductions. It really was more of cleaning house. I asked Becky for a list of everyone she had in payroll for the fire department. And we basically went through that entire list to see who has dropped off and has been participating in several years or whatever. You know, we've put forward to have them removed from the payroll system. And what that does is the total number of people that we have in our payroll system for the fire department determines what we pay for liability, accident, disability, insurance premiums based on the number of employees we have. So as we went through the people, we were able to reduce that by sixteen people overall. Which, you know, obviously it doesn't really save on the wage side, but those people had turnout gear, pagers, things of that, that they'll be returning and have returned that we can recycle and reuse over the next year. Because those are the line items that were severely cut in purchasing turnout gear in radio. So that's where the savings was in reducing the staff and cleaning up some of that that were hanging around. And you know, some of the major equipment line items were cut and most of it was on vehicle maintenance side. So we're getting all of our annual maintenance stuff done, but we're just crossing out factors that we don't have any major, major breakdowns that will be significant, that will have to go back to reserve fund or a fall town meeting to address. But everything is up to snuff right now. It's working very well. The wage rates, so a couple of things on the wage side of the house is call firefighters are a unique employee, I could say, is you have no idea how many hours a year they're going to work. They're not scheduled and they come when they're available and when we need them. Historically, in the last nine to ten years, the town has never, when they've brought in a consultant to do wage classification study, the call firefighters have never been included as far as that process. So they've never been graded or put on a wage and classification scale in this town. So as, you know, all the other part-time clerical staff and everything has some type of a scale for the non-union employees, the firefighters are not on any scale. So under Master on Law, forty-eight, forty-two, the fire chief sets the rates on call firefighters through the board's blessing once it's run forward. And that's what I've done. And that's what I've done in several years in the past. So this year is because of the budget cuts, certain things that had transpired. Some people didn't, the unions got their increases, the non-union people did not. And there was a motion at town meeting by a resident to give the two percent COLA to non-union employees. Well, the number that was used was based on clerical staff and people's hours that were cut. The call firefighters were never included. So if it were passed at town meeting, none of my firefighters would have been part of it. So I'm looking at is they're not treated as non-union employees in the town's eye. They're treated under the fire department's umbrella in some other fashion because the fire chief sets their rates, which is fine. What I've given you is kind of on this sheet here, if you have it, is a kind of a breakdown of where we are, where we're going. Right now, we only budget thirty-four thousand dollars for on-call staff and that includes ten thousand dollars for training. If you look at what Barry's doing, between on-call wages and training, sixty-nine thousand dollars is what they spend. Paxton spends a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Holden spends a hundred thousand dollars. And Sterling spends a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So we are way, way below than any other town. And we have twenty-four active P M currently that we utilize on a daily basis that when we have calls that exceed the full-time staffing that they're utilized. Again, most of these other towns pay two or three hour minimums. We do not. So it's one of those things. It's a large group of people that are non-union, but are not treated as any other non-union employee. So the question is, is that what I've tried to do is I've tried to make adjustments over the years as the union continues to increase, that we make adjustments based on rank and certifications, that we start moving their scale in the right direction. What I proposed this year was to adjust their scale by three percent. Just so you know, that the difference between the on-call, the average on-call person makes twenty-two dollars an hour. The average full-timer makes twenty-eight dollars an hour. It's a twenty-six percent difference in pay between both of them. And they, they hold the same certification. They are hired under the same job description. So as a police officer, you can go to the part-time police academy, but you can't become a full-time police officer until you go to the full-time police academy. But that's not the, that's not the same with the fire department. Fire department, once you become a firefighter level two, it's a state certification and national certification, whether you're part-time or full-time. The training is the same. The number of hours is the same. So it were, there are two situations that, you know, I'm just looking to increase it, their hourly rate by three percent. But I'm not asking for any more money in the line item.
Now Seth, when you talked about the sixteen people when you went through.
Yep.
So those were on, those were on-call people that were taken off the list, is that?
Yes, because those are the people that were unact, not active.
So, so you originally had forty?
Correct.
And when you talk about thirty, the total of thirty-four thousand, that was for the sixteen or was that for the forty? When you're saying.
That was for the forty. But again, they weren't, they weren't drawing out of that pool of money.
No, I know, but I just, when you're looking at the numbers, because Barry had forty. So we had forty, but you reduced it because they're people that weren't being utilized. So I just was trying to clarify the numbers because there was, you know, quite a discrepancy.
You know, and again, I, you know, wrong brought up a point. It opens a can of worms because some people are treated differently. I totally understand that. But I just wanted to bring this to your attention and the request is obviously is, you know, none of these people have been paid yet because they get paid month, they only get paid once a month. And so absolutely no retro involved in this at all. If you prefer me to wait till fall town meeting, then it becomes a retro thing. If you were, what I would like to do is, with your blessing, is move forward with three percent now. And then over the next couple of years is address the scale dramatically based on regional surveys of what other communities are paying.
So this doesn't impact, I'm going through the chair. This doesn't impact the line item of your overall budget?
No.
You found it somewhere else?
Well, and I guess my only thing is like, this, was the finance committee aware about how this worked? Because I don't think they realized that the cost of living was worked into your line.
So each year, well, so each year in my budget packet, I clearly, for the last twelve years, I clearly tell them that these people are not part of the scale.
Right.
And that then something needs to be addressed. And again, it's a big document and a lot of people don't read the fine print.
Well, plus it's hard because it's just one big number with a bunch of people. So it's not like there's any way to really identify it quickly.
Right.
So I mean, it would be nice if that's clarified and discussed every year with the finance committee. So I, I mean, I have no problem because I think everybody should get a cost of living anyway. And we're going to work on that. But when you say about Ron's, I would like to hear from Ron, kind of like his version of personnel and how it's going to affect the town.
So first, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I told Seth what I was going to say tonight, so he's very aware of my position on this. He's correct. The money's in the budget already for those people to get three percent raises. Now, at the town meeting, had that motion went through, the gentleman brought forward on wages, it wouldn't have mattered because they already had money there. So it would just, you just would have had to put aside and approve it and we would have been done. So both the non-union people would have got raises and those people have got raises as well. You know, I got to be honest, I wasn't, I wasn't, I didn't know that they were treated separately as non-union employees. My problem, and it's very clear, and I've said it to the board members, is that I've had a very difficult time with morale among various employees because of the unfair or unequal treatment of union and non-union staff. I said to the chief that I would prefer that we deal with this issue in the fall. We're going to look at the free cash issue and hopefully if we have the money, and this money we wouldn't even need in the fall because it's already in the budget. So, and there's about seven other positions that there's money in the budget for already. So really, we have to look at the difference between the total cost of all non-union players, including this, minus what's in the budget. And that's how much we would have to allocate in the fall town meeting. The issue of retro isn't really important. We're going to retro. My opinion is we're going to retro everybody. We're going to treat everybody as equals. So be it a fireman or be it one of the non-union people that is non-contracted, all of them will be entitled to that retro for those hours. So I want to be fair and equal. My concern, and I said it to the chief and I said it to this board, is the issue of the can of worms. It's just, I'm going to have people from the library that didn't get union, didn't get raises. And I have people from all the various departments that didn't get raises as well. How come they're different than us? Why should they get a raise or a non-union and we didn't get a raise? It just creates a lot of animosity and bad feeling among staff. So now my position, again, I said very clearly to the chief, my position, wait the fall. I'd like to treat everybody exactly the same way and give everybody the raise and make it retro at the same time. Or nobody gets a raise. Whatever that situation is in the fall, it should be fair and equal. Now, I will say, and I appreciate that the firemen are different. And different union contracts sometimes give different percentage increases in terms of their wages. That's happened in the past there, when you guys have approved various contracts. My standard for the non-union employees is what I put forward was two percent. The chief is asking for three. He has the right under his powers as a strong chief to ask for whatever he wants to. It's up to this board to decide what they want to ratify. You can ratify the three percent or you can make it consistent with all the other non-union employees at two percent. Is there a difference in positions? Yes. Public safety officials sometimes do get bigger raises than other people. But that's up to the board's selectmen to decide if they want to make that distinction between the two and the three percent. But I would ask that the board wait until fall and let's do this as a package. I don't know, and I don't want to, I kind of feel a little awkward throwing it in. But it makes me uncomfortable legally to treat people differently. And I haven't checked with the town attorney on this, but I just know that, you know, if you don't have a good reason for raises and you just kind of haplessly give one group and not the other group a raise on the same category non-union, it may be a problem. But I can't say that for sure because I haven't checked with the town attorney. I appreciate the chief, just like any other department head. They've come forward telling me that their employees deserve the COLA raise raises. So the chief is no different. He should fight for his employees as all the other departments have fought like hell for that. I appreciate that. I don't have any objections to it. I just need to treat everybody equally because I'm officially kind of the lead administrative person of town. I need to be fair and equal to everybody.
Well, and I do know, like especially with the library, getting that money voted back into them at town floor, it wasn't specified how it would be used. And they're one of the groups that would want to be using it towards wages. And they have that money available and it's going to be a huge argument to say, I can't get, you know, I have this extra money that wasn't targeted for anything else. Why can the fire? And like I said, I agree. They deserve it. But I do, I do see that we could have an issue because the only reason there's a difference between union and non-union is because we have no choice. But where they aren't officially union, then you are allowing non-union personnel to get increases and not allowing other non-union, you know, individuals to get increases. And I can see that that might, that might be a problem down the road.
So part of the process is that Becky has to go through all the employees and set their wage rates for the year. And I've said to Becky that all non-union people, non-contracted, non-union people, are going to be set at last year's wage rates. And all department heads will fill out the paperwork according to this year's saying. So nobody, I don't care if there's extra money in their budget or not. We're not approving the pay rates until such time as everybody gets it in terms of non-union people. So that if we decide not to do it tonight, the chief will have to turn in his, what's the name for it? Job?
Wage certification.
Wage certifications. They'll have to turn in wage certifications for the rate this year. And then if you change the fall town meeting, Becky will redo it and we'll send a certification for those people and change it to that time. So this just requires some paperwork, if again, we have the funding to do it, that's all.
Do we have any other input from members and board?
I don't know. Through the chair, if I may. This came up last year too. I know Becky, you came in front of the board. I know it's creating morale issues. We do say every year we're going to try to revisit this and then we don't because the town doesn't have money. It's kind of the point where we're losing staff. I mean, we're having a hard time filling positions. You know, we just had department heads come in and the people, you know, were applauding them and allowing them for the great job that they did. And it does seem unfair that we continuously kick this down the road. I mean, do I think we'll look at it in the fall? Maybe. Do I think that, you know, finance committee is going to recommend it? No. So, or that, that we're going to actually.
If I could, only because I've talked with Karen, and I don't know if Karen's on, but in our conversation when Lou was making these amendments was that we would, we both agreed that we would revisit this in the fall.
We always revisit it.
And I expect, well, I expected we'll support it, but I can't speak for the finance committee, but that was our.
Becky, in the past, we've pretty much been able to bring in the cost of living, even though it was voted down. I mean, I know when I was on the finance committee, it was always a priority. We had to cut it because there just was not money. But if there was opportunity, the board was always supportive of trying to.
Well, I mean, it has nothing to do with support. It's more just the money that's available. I mean, the town's in a fiscal position right now where it's, again, I don't think it's poor intent. It's more just we're not in the financial position.
Right, but I think the finance committee certainly would revisit it in the fall, if it's possible.
If I can, there has been a COLA like that since I've been here. I've been here for eight years. And there has been a COLA for non-union people every year until this one. So now we're in a little different situation than we have been because I was like, they didn't get it, so.
Right. But in the past, we had voted it down in the past and then funded it at future meetings, correct?
No, I think last year was the first time. It did go into the budget last year.
No, no, but years passed way back, there were times that we had to, we had voted not to do COLAs and then we ended up funding them. So anyway, I don't know where we're going to sit, but we're certainly, that's something that obviously I think the finance committee is supportive if there's any way of finding ways to do the cost of living, is funding that.
I'll only say this, this is going to be my number one priority in terms of free cash in the fall because I just think the morale issue that what is causing this is unfair and unjust. So that will be not my number one priority in terms of utilizing free cash before I do anything else.
My, if I may, Ron, I know I had asked if there was a ballpark number in kind of the amount of, my intent was the kind of the amount of free cash that may be needed in the fall to bring everybody up. Because some is in a budget, some is not, and how that looks. I don't know if you have that answer yet or not, but I also wonder, Seth, maybe you know, do you know? I mean, I guess my concern is that the salary where we are, and three percent is not a huge increase, but it's still something that we, are folks not responding, are on-call firefighters not responding because of the lack of minimum hours and everything? Or I know there's a whole lot of other stuff going on, but are we kind of continuing to kind of almost hurt ourselves and potentially put us in a position where we don't have people that could respond choosing not to or whatever? Or because there's multiple things going on and they can go somewhere else and make more money or have a set minimum hours?
So call firefighters are clearly, they're not doing it for the money. Because it's just, there's not enough hours. It's not scheduled work. It's not guaranteed, you know, weekly income or anything like that. The biggest issue we have is hiring and retaining this type of worker. The training alone is seven months, driving to snow, you know, two nights a week and all day Saturday. And we do not pay them for the two hundred and forty something hours that they do at training. They go on their own. And if they become an EMT, they do another hundred and ten hours on their own, not paid at a tuition of twenty-five hundred dollars on their own. So we don't offer anything as far as training these people. You know, we're like, oh, please come in, you know, we'll take, you know, any warm body will take. It's great. But the problem is, is. But, the problem is, is the requirement to become certified, to become a firefighter, to be able to, you know, get on the job and work is so high, the bar is so high, that, you know, the 18 to 24-year-olds are the ones you're gonna get because they're the ones that have the time. But guess what? They're the ones that are in college. And when they graduate from college, they move off, they move somewhere else, and there's no rental income or rental housing in this community that they could afford to stay in this community. So, they, they're very, you know, so unless I get someone that moves into town that's been a call firefighter in another town, they want to join, that's where we're getting them. It's a young person's job, clearly, because the requirements and, you know, PAT or medical requirements now is just so expensive and it's very dynamic, so...
To answer the second, the other part of your question, so Becky's been on vacation, so she just got back, and I asked her for the others' numbers, I didn't put her under a high threshold to get them right away, because we really don't need them till the fall for the town meeting. But Becky can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, I think it's 20 grand or less, given the seven people in, in the area, the fragment. It's 20 grand or less. I don't think, in terms of free cash, there should be a problem. I've never, we've always had at least a few hundred thousand minimum in free cash. The only thing I don't, truthfully, if you want to ask what I don't like about this process, is that, remember again, we're using free cash for this, it's a small amount. With this, we're gonna go from maybe 100 to 115 grand of using free cash to operate, to do our budget. Not a big thing, but again, you know how I'm pressuring that issue. But that's the, really, in my opinion, the only little bit of downside is that we're going back to that, and I want to keep that number as low as possible.
The biggest concern, if we don't retain the people we have or be able to entice more people to come on, and the numbers start dropping, it's gonna require either more overtime and full-time staff or the hiring of more full-time staff in the future. I mean, you look at Holden, Holden now has 29 full-time staff in their fire department, where eight years ago, they had just as many as we did right now. So, because they've lost all their part-time, on-call people, and, you know, you go back 15, 20 years ago, everyone that was on the DBW was on the fire department. So, the DBW used to let them go and, you know, they came to the firehouse and, you know, we did what we had to do. You know, we're on average of, last year we did 19, the year before we did 24 structured fires in town. You know, we're dollar loss and fire damage in someone's home, that's a lot, you know, for a town of our size. So, it is a continuous thing that, you know, there are only four people on during the day and three on the overnight. You know, so it takes, in the first 15 minutes of a fire, we need 15 people on scene. And, yeah, you can say you can call mutually and stuff like that, but they're all short-staffed, and, you know, depending on where they're coming from, it's 20 to 25 minutes in some cases to get here because, however soon, they're coming from home to get to a fire truck, same with Barry, and same with, you know, Paxton, you know, so it's, you know, it is a time thing, so that's all.
So, through the chair, if I may, I mean, we heard from Ron. My concern would be the legal issue with the employees. Again, I have no issue with this, again, this is something we always talk about. So I'd want clarification on that, but, I mean, if you're looking for ratification, as you have here tonight, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do ratify this because of those concerns, pending clarification from legal to make sure that it doesn't put a town, the town into a precarious position. And if it does, we'll revisit that conversation and we'll do it in the fall. But that will be my motion, if that's amenable to the board.
So, there's a motion, does anybody want a second?
Wait one second.
Discussion.
Okay, good question, I just wanted to clear, so just, so I am clear with what the motion is. The motion is, assuming the attorney says there's no legal issues, the motion is to allow for the raises immediately and not wait until the fall, is that correct? Just so I understand what the motion says?
Yeah, that would be the motion. But again, I want to send a clear signal to the rest of our employees too, that I'm hoping that the board is in unison in supporting these come the fall to be retroactive. I mean, you have inflations at almost 5% right now, food costs, gas costs are going up, it's not fair to our employees.
I mean, I guess I do still have an issue with morale, because it's gonna, it's gonna cause some, some problems with some of the other departments. You know, and it's been, it's been highlighted and discussed, so everybody's gonna be talking about it tomorrow. And so I do have a concern and, like I said, I 100% support that they deserve the money, but where the other people who deserve the money as well are not getting it, I have, I do have a problem with morale and the effect it's gonna have. And when we talk about getting an opinion on legal, there's so many different ways of looking at this, I'm not really sure exactly. I mean, people aren't happy to find that out, but I really think we'd be hard-pressed to stop other department heads from moving money over to their, their wage items if they have the money, and certainly not, and who, do we want to get into a legal battle with somebody if they, if we tell them they can't do it? I mean, there's gonna be an expense to that as well, so, um...
I guess part of my concern is across the board, morale everywhere, and the potential to lose any staff, I feel like we are not at a higher hiring level, so to, if we lost staff and then, anywhere, and then had to recruit, I think that would be a very arduous task because knowing what our fiscal situation is and everything. So, I, I would very much like to be able to say tonight that we can do it for everyone because I feel like this needs to be a, a top priority. And I struggle a little bit with, we have the money in the line items, do we give it to those, those individuals? And the, the on-call and kind of piecemeal it and try to show that, almost a good faith effort that we're really trying this, or is it better to wait? And I, I can make arguments on both sides of that. And really, is it, do we wait until the fall and risk potentially losing every, you know, our, everyone? And, and, I mean, not to say that we do some now, that we don't lose others, I, and I don't even know the positions that have, off the top of my head, that have budget, the increases included and whatever. I tried very hard to not, I just wanted kind of a numbers, but that's kind of where my thinking is, is I can make the arguments on either side, and I...
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's gonna have an effect on morale for the fire department as well. It's gonna have a negative, if we don't pass it, you know, there's gonna be effect on morale for them.
Well, if I can, through the chair, I mean, the intent, to echo Leah's comment, I mean, the intent is to put the motion to make it clear to all of our employees that we fully intend on doing this. But I think with our current budget issues and with Seth's, what Seth is presenting, you know, I'd rather fix it all at once, but sometimes the best way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time, and if we have the opportunity to fix this now, send a message to our employees saying that we're going into the next couple of months looking to fix this as a permanent fix. If it passes employment law, obviously, we want to ensure the town's protected, but...
I mean, to you, Mr. Chairman, I'm afraid that the message would be, somehow the firemen are better than us, and not, oh, thank you, give it to them, and hopefully we'll get it later. I think the message to a lot of my employees would be, yeah, the public safety department, they got taken care of, but look at us, we got shafted again. That's the message I'm afraid of, and I think that will scream louder than the other way around, just so you know. I mean, I already know that I've had department heads of non-union employees that are already screaming about it, I've had department heads who are non-union, non-contracted employees that are already, you know, yelling at me. I'm not comfortable that that's gonna make it better. And I'll also say this, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the least people in terms of screaming are gonna be the call guys, because they don't come in, a lot of them won't even come in until there's a fire or some reason to come in, and then, only the ones who want to come in will come in, the other ones won't. I'm not sure we're gonna lose those because they haven't gotten their raises yet. I think they're the least likely people to leave based upon a raise. I just don't see them as being the ones that would leave. But I do see staff members who are working their tail off, sitting side by side with other staff members who got their raises in the same office. I see them as having the anger, just to be clear, because they are literally sitting side by side, and one person got a raise and the other person didn't. Call firemen are not sitting side by side with other staff members.
So, I understand, Seth, these COLA raises were not part of the, the town meeting, correct?
So, basically, we presented a line item, I presented a line item budget for the wage count. It was cut by $10,000 because of the school budget. When the school came back, and the finance committee restored most of the positions, they only put 5,000 back, they moved the whole amount back, because they wanted to give the other five to the library, so they didn't lose certification, which was perfectly fine. And, you know, I'm looking at historically, you know, we look at the number of calls we have, the number of people that respond back, and again, it's roll the dice. This year I gave back $15,000 in call wages because we didn't have a brush fire season. We didn't have, you know, no one was driving, so we didn't have highly any accidents. So, we were able to give money back. But two years ago, I had to ask for $15,000 more that was budgeted because it was a crazy year. You don't know, you don't know the use that you're gonna get, so...
So, I guess my, my fear is, I don't, I want to do it, I don't think there's anybody on this board that doesn't want to do it. I think I would ask you to ask your people to hang in there until fall, because I'm afraid if we do this and then other people come, it's not only gonna cause maybe a little bit of chaos, but we can't undo a town meeting's decision. They said no to COLA raises, and so we can't even entertain anybody else's that were part of the article. So, I think, if you could say, we promise to not let it go this year and to keep morale where it is, hang in there, and it would be retroactive, so... And I know what it's, I know what it's like to be union even and not get the raises on the other side, because the professional staff did and, you know, union didn't, and it does cause tension anyway, so if we can relieve some of that without kicking them in again. That's just my thought. I don't think that we can undo something that the town meeting voted on or against, I guess.
The vote of the budget?
May I withdraw my request?
Oh, withdraw, you want to withdraw it, are you sure?
I don't want to put you guys in a position to vote.
Well, and we appreciate that, because I had a tough time voting on this. And obviously, pass along, they obviously know that we appreciate all the work that they do, and they certainly, certainly do not want to not pay our people. But we want to try to, you know, be fair to everybody and transparent and, so...
Okay.
Finally, if I may, Mitch and Leah will have to rescind their...
Okay, so...
I'll rescind my second.
I'll, I'll rescind my motion.
With regrets and appreciation to...
Thanks, Chief, I appreciate that. And we will, we are gonna be working on trying to see what we can do to take some...
That's all I got.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
All right. I don't even know why this is on here under old business rule, did you take care of this 61A on Irish Lane?
Yeah, but we, well, we can do time issues report first and then go through that, I don't know. It might be real short and sweet anyway, but...
Oh, do you want to do that, or you want, because I don't want to hold these guys up doing their present?
I'm gonna take two seconds, that's fine. So, I gave you guys a full-time issue report, I gave you a full-time issue report already, so I have a lot to report. We'll be working on a number of contracts, one is for STANPAC for the pavement management plan, which Solers have, I have to work that out. And then the other one is for the pavement management, for the manufacturing of marijuana, that one. Also, we're gonna have to put out the contract for the assessors that's actually expired, so I'm gonna be working on an RFP, another three-year contract with the assessors. But I hope you found the town manager, the town issues report interesting. If you have any questions on my reports, please, by all means, send them to me, if you have any questions. But I think it, I tried to touch on all the key issues for you guys, so I wouldn't have to spend hours recording your hair, but if you have anything, just let me know, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have anything for town history? Okay, I appreciate it. So, anyway, so on the 61A thing, is there something?
So, the only reason it's going through the process is because it's required that we actually go through the motion, so...
I thought we addressed this at the last meeting.
Yeah, no, we, we talked about it and we said, let's go through the motions and then...
You asked for it to go through the process, we're normally...
Oh, okay.
The key issue is this property is not leaving 61A, that's what's unique about this. So it's really just a formality for you guys to vote to approve.
So we have, we have all comments from all boards and there's no issues, okay.
Nobody's gonna, nobody suggested that we buy it because they know it can't be, so there really was no issue.
So do we have to actually do a motion?
Just I would have a motion to allow the sale of that address.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the sale of 47 Irish Lane to remain in 61A.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Can we roll call?
Lock eye.
Benoid eye?
We're sitting here.
Wait, Benoid.
Nipples eye.
And thanks for sending that, I think I was the one that was pushing for it to go through the appropriate process, and there was some question as to whether we actually had any input or say in it because it was staying in 61A anyway. So, I appreciate the other boards and commissions looking at it, even though it was probably just an exercise.
Let's always good practice to go through the process.
Yeah, this came up, I think, Ron, this was the last couple of weeks I was chair, because you called me on vacation. And I believe, to Leah's point, this does have to go, according to MGL, this still has to go through the process even if it remains in 61A, so it's one of those things where you still gotta do it, so...
Yeah.
I appreciate the other boards and commissions feedback and...
All right, and finally, into new business, do you want to introduce your guests, Ron?
Sure, as you know, we got a missus from the public as much as the guests here. The town got a grant through the community compact to do what's called a facility management study. It's to evaluate all town existing buildings to, to see what their long-term capital needs are and to see where our buildings had shortcomings and what we could do to improve them. This is extremely important document in order to do long-term planning and to let taxpayers know where the issues are in buildings so that the taxpayers, along with, along with the board of selectmen, could work together to develop a plan for how we're gonna address these future names. The gentleman before us are from Hassett Associates, somebody I've worked with, I've worked with Todd for, I guess, the last eight years in one capacity or another, so I know him very well. I know the quality of product that he presents, and I was really happy to see his firm respond to our RFP. This is standard procurement, I didn't ask to go through the procurement process. And Todd has shown me great quality over the years, so I was, again, proud that he came through it. Todd and his partner here to present the plan, and I'll, I'll say Jerry's been a key facilities guy, Todd is the financial guy, he's a, he's a certified public accountant, certified public accountant, is that the right term?
Government.
So, so Todd's been an accountant and frankly is well-known by the DOR as being a really top-end accountant, and I've had the opportunity to see this guy work one day a week and put together accounting for all town. He's done a phenomenal job. So I think you got, between his asset management and the physical natures of buildings that Jerry knows, I think it makes a great team with that. They're here to present to you the report and to answer any questions you might have about the report. They have done a summary that they're gonna present tonight, and I think we're gonna let them go through the summary and then, Mr. Chairman, have questions at the end, if that's possible.
And just one question, so will this be available, could we make this available on our website?
Yeah, I've already made the facility major plan in total available, and this is a summary that I can make available as well for those people who want to read this very, because this is a multi-hundred-page report, I think the final document, it's thorough. This will give people an easier read in the summary of what's going on. Would that, do you like to have Todd start the presentation? If you don't mind, I'm gonna run through the...
Thank you, you're good. So I have a brief set of slides that I'll walk through for the board. Appreciate your time tonight. And it is a little different than the format of the actual full report, so I think it would be helpful for this to be on your website as well. It offers a little different perspective. So, just very quickly, Ron sort of already introduced us, Jerry McCarty and I, Todd Hassett. I'll just review quickly our, our process that we went through, the report. We've got some suggested repairs that we, we, in particular, we want to highlight to the board tonight. There's recommended maintenance for each of the 10 municipal facilities that we were asked to evaluate. And we did also come up with six sort of high-level executive findings and recommendations for you to consider as well in terms of managing your public facilities. And certainly we'll take questions as they come along, so... As Ron said, I'm the owner of Hassett Financial Services. I have been in the public finance arena for north of 35 years. My colleague Jerry McCarty's expertise is in facilities management, inspectional services, and public construction projects in particular. We've done a number of engagements together, and we've worked on a number of public construction projects together over... Jerry, he looks younger than me, but I think he's got about 35...
I've been around for a while.
We've been around for a while, and most of our work has been in Massachusetts. So as Ron mentioned, we were selected through a competitive bid process that the town conducted. Our services are being financed through a state community compact grant in its entirety, no... no local tax dollars to pay for our services in our report. So, we initially, excuse me, issued a questionnaire to the ten facility managers through Ron's office and got some preliminary feedback and thoughts from the various facility managers. We then did a series of site visits. Joe Buckley in particular was really instrumental in assisting in getting Jerry into a lot of unusual places within certain buildings and also offering his input as well as, as we went through the process. You'll notice we have a lot of sample photographs in the full report. You'll notice some of them, there's snow in the background. We did start this in, I think, late February or early March and conducted site work through April, at which point we began assembling our evaluation of the report, which took most of the month of May. We did issue a draft report to the community around May twenty-fifth, late, late May. Asked for three weeks for the town to provide some feedback. We did get some good constructive feedback, in particular from public safety and the lib, public library. And we incorporated that and some other edits into the final version, which you have, which is about two hundred and seventy-five pages. Essentially, we did the report so that each facility could, that section of the report could be lifted. So, we've got the narrative and evaluation of the building with the related photographs. And a ta, we have two different tables, which we refer to as sort of the immediate repairs and then the longer term. We were asked to put together a ten-year plan on what we believe the town should consider looking at for maintaining its public facilities. And we also provided at the, at the back end some industry documents on things that we thought might be helpful to Joe Buckley in particular, but to the community in terms of cleaning and, and spending on, on maintenance of your facilities. So, the ten facilities we evaluated represent approximately eighty-four thousand square feet of real estate. Of those ten, two facilities, you know this better than we do, are over ninety years old. Four are between forty and sixty years old and the remaining four are now pretty much twenty to twenty-five years old. So, they've all in some way come of age. There's certain systems that are at or beyond their life cycles and need, need attention. We've, we've noticed some things in certain facilities that are common in more than one facility and we've recommended the town consider looking at it holistically when there's a, a common need in a, in a few buildings so that you can get the most value for, for the public dollar in terms of bidding, perhaps a larger project to address two to three buildings if they have common concerns. It's also important to highlight to the board, the town's historical investment in these ten buildings is about eleven and a half million. Right now, the net book value of those properties is, I think, around five million dollars on your, on your financial statements. Your board of assessors have these properties assessed at eleven point three million and there's a little more detail in the long report. And your insurance schedule, we also looked at, at the town's property and liability insurance schedule of values is approximately nine point eight million dollars. It's important to understand that in today's market, eighty-four thousand square feet of public real estate building, the replacement cost is substantial. And Jerry could tell you in, in more detail, but certainly we're seeing bids and construction bids now in the four hundred dollars per square foot range, up to over seven hundred for public safe, certain public safety facilities. So, whatever that number you choose to use times eighty-four thousand square feet, the town has a major investment and we want to maintain it and protect that investment as long as we can and not have to deal with the replacement, if you will. So, we've come up with, this is a variation, a little different than what you would see in, in the report. What we've done is we've gone through and we've extracted ten possible projects that the town could consider. So, and you'll see, we've, some of them have more than one facility listed under each bullet point that we think are critical repairs that perhaps should be folded into your next capital plan or when there's opportunity for grants or other resources come available. And I would just ask Jerry to, this is, I think, maybe three slides. He can give you a brief overview of, if we just go back to that first slide, previous slide? Thank you.
So, so being facilities, we, we look at obviously the overall building operations, the safety of it, of the uses of the building as well as the public. And, and you know, and so, so you have to look at these things. Obviously, when we approach roof and exterior envelopes, water infiltration, as soon as you have water infiltration, if, if not addressed, it leads to, it just exacerbates the situation. That's why the roof, exterior roofs, where we, they have active leaking on several of these couple of buildings and, and that's why it was brought to the attention. Go to the leaking toilets, not just a leaking toilet, it's a, it's a pipe, a public pipe within the building, it's in the wall cavity. It's obviously, it's a, it's a, how things you want, you wanna address as, as well as a full locker upgrades because of, you have female staff and don't have female facilities for that staff. Underground storage tank within the town annex, the, the underground tank was originally built with the building as, as more than likely, didn't have any records, but as it described to me, but more than likely it's a steel tank. That's something that just is long past its life cycle. That's something, it's, it's, they don't end well if it's not addressed. So, that's why it's something the town would wanna investigate, pressure test at a minimum and plan to replace. Exterior wall, excuse me, exterior wall repairs, the water treatment, we had a, had a wall panel failure. It hasn't been addressed yet. We need to do that because in high wind situations, it's only gonna exacerbate the situation, cause more damage. I wanna get that. Electric service conduit at the pool, again, that's a potential. I'm not saying that the safety has it disappointed, but it's a potential and it should be addressed. You don't wanna leave anything like that outstanding. Domestic hot water distribution within the public safety building, that becomes a, a state health issue because of, it affects cells and some other issues within the public safety building. And exhaust air within the, exhaust air in the DPW garage base, the situation is, is just not, it's not turning over the air. And again, it's, it becomes a health issue, you just wanna, again, address that. Electrical panel imbalance in the public safety, this is something that the chief brought to my attention. He had it tested because he was having some electrical problems. We, and, and you'll see in the report, that's something we have always putting in our reports because the industry, especially ever source, they were big, large electric users with big electric services. They want you to do a testing on these electrical services every five to ten years to make sure that you have the, the panels are operational, operating properly. Whether known imbalance, imbalance causes loads and we have three-phase motors or, or low voltage stuff. Imbalanced loads can create problems with your electronics. Again, being a public safety building, you don't want that, that issue. The coping failures of the public pool, the deck, that's the public pool. It is, the coping is the surround around the pool. They have the piece of actually broken and collapsed. They have, they're covered with cones. Obviously, it's a safety issue that you wanna address. And then at the town, town hall, it's just, we have some guys in downspouts that have, they've come apart and they've just leaking water onto the surface and you just wanna address. It's an easy address, but we wanna take care of it. And again, public buildings, commercial buildings, water infiltration is the biggest concern you have. You wanna address that promptly. So, we go to, sorry, we have recommended maintenance plans and these are standard plans that I, I've developed or on the town's side developed, the town I work for. It's, it becomes a system. It's almost like when the chief, the fire chief is talking about your, your management plan, this is almost a management plan for your staff. It says how, how often should we change your filters, what you should be looking for, how to address things, what, what you should be budgeting for, what you should be monitoring at a content. It's very simple, but it's one of those things, you, you have to give it to employees and employees can read it and they, they understand what they should be doing in a building. Because, not that they know what they need to do for it, but they need to do it because they're the first line of defense. They're in the buildings, they see this stuff, that they monitor it or they do the, or they do the filter changes. Again, it helps the longevity of the equipment. Again, this for roofs and the like. And then, obviously, I'll kick it back to Todd here.
So, in the, the detailed report, there are, in the front end on the executive summary, there are six sort of general findings and recommendations and this is a summary of them. You know, we've noted that the town facilities have, are aging and many of the systems have come of age and, and there are, there's been some deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed, so we, we suggest, you know, further work there. We also noted that some of the public buildings have spaces that appear to us to be underutilized and that perhaps there may be other ways that some of those spaces could be utilized for other purposes, other public purposes or public programs or even possibly an area that could be leased or, or help some other organization in the community. So, we suggest, you know, maybe Ron oversee a, a sort of master, what we call a master plan in use of, of these facilities to sort of better coordinate and, and. And some of these spaces are being heated and cleaned and not utilized that, that much. We, we suggest, many communities now have a separate facilities department. We don't believe at this time Rutland would fall into that category necessarily, but it may make sense to consider developing a division of the public works department to be responsible for facilities and maybe be the first line of defense because certainly your library director is, is, has skills to run a public library. Your fire chief runs the fire service. And all of these ten facilities are not necessarily managed by people who are facility. It's not their thing. So, to the extent the town could begin to look at maybe reorganizing and perhaps pulling budgets into a centralized, comprehensive budget and over time developing that so that the projects become more proactive and, and rather than reactive as things fail. We also noted there were a number of site, site upgrades needed. And again, there's more detail in the narrative. Jerry mentioned the, the water issues. So, we think that should be looked at comprehensively because we, hopefully there'll be some cost savings rather than doing small individual projects at each site. And also, in general, our observations were that some of the facilities could be maintained at a higher level of cleanliness. We, we learned that there are two staff people that support this eighty-four thousand square feet of public space. And Jerry could speak more to the industry metrics, but typically, we don't, we don't expect one person to be responsible for more than thirty-five thousand square feet. And a hospital, I think, is about twenty-five. That would be a, a whole nother level of cleanliness.
Now, when you're talking about the square footage, that includes bays and everything, right?
Yes.
It's not like.
No, it's not all offices or.
Right, right. The maintenance would be different.
The maintenance would be correct. Yeah, so, so, so obviously, using, using the bays, using the DPW or the, or the fire, fire department, obviously, I, I would assume the fire department take care of the bays within the thing. But, there's office space within that facility and, and that's where we'd say there's a different, when you go to the building to building, there's a different level of, of cleanliness and maintenance. But, that custodial maintenance staffing, it goes back to that report in the first line of defense. They, they should be, they should be more than just taking the trash out. They'd be looking at and saying, hey, I see a problem. I'm, I'm maintaining a problem here, there's a problem and they're reporting back. And, and a little more observation and again, a little, a little more proactive in that.
So, in the, in the full report, do you distinguish more on the type of space and the type of maintenance? Because like I said, you're gonna be vacuuming floors as opposed to a bay is gonna require much.
Yeah, yeah, so what, in, in the, they just, we, in, in the report, there is in the backside of it, there's these, they talk about industries, again, going to an industry standard and they said, and they, and they talk about uses that are office uses versus recreational uses versus. And so, there's, because each space, again, a recreational space of one person can do forty thousand square feet. It says, but a library is, is obviously a different use and it's probably a little water dense.
And so, just to further respond to your question, sir, at the end, near the end of each facility section, we have a, a grid that recommends the types of maintenance for each facility and the frequency at which those things should be addressed, whether it's quarterly or weekly and so on. And that varies by facility. We also, at the very end of the report, provided just a, our sort of first sample of what would a consolidated divisions, facilities division budget look like and what types of things does each of the ten facilities need annually? I mean, it's very modest because we understand your resources are limited. And then the longer term needs certainly as, as grants or other opportunities, a year of high free cash, for example. Maybe you can address some for the bigger concerns.
I did have one other question regarding the review process. So, you know municipalities are required to do self-evaluations and transitions for accessibility?
Yes.
And have plans to address accessibility? Was that part of your plan?
Well, the answer is no, not specifically. What happened is I did a cursory review and, and in that, we, we highlighted the things. I didn't measure every doorknob, I didn't go to every sink and facility and that type of level of detail, which, which I have done. It, not, not I, I, we have outsourced it to do that handicap accessibility monitoring. Is what we, what I did though was I did go through buildings and I, and I did point out, some of them were the obvious. The, the town hall, though, obviously, there's no handicap accessibility on various floors. And that's, that's no brainer. But, I did, going through there, I did, did note some, some other items and said, hey, the, the, this is an issue that you need to do a more comprehensive view, that this is an issue that jumps out, that you need accessibility because of, if, if the town decides to put X amount of money into a building, you're gonna trigger handicap accessibility and there's items that, that would, would trigger that someone might not have known. And so, what happens, that cost would happen.
And that was my concern, because once you do a repair, you need to address that. So, that could add, obviously add expense to the repair.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
It's some percentage of, some percent, some percentage of the value of the building kicks off the accessibility issue, right?
Yes, it's, it's a difference that they've changed some of the regulations. But, but having said, you're doing an ordinary repair, replacing a roof, no, would not. But, having said that, if you're gonna say, oh, we're gonna start to work on these offices, well, once you work on the offices, you have to make those offices accessible. Or if you, if you trigger a certain value, then yes, you got to pull the facilities, main entrances, accessibility to the different levels and, and it goes on. So, just going back to one of the things about utilization of space, using the, the town hall building as an example, it causes, you don't have handicap accessibility, you have a basement level that's not used, you know, a third, an upper level that's not used and you're using it in between. At that point, these, and you're heating the whole building. But, what happens is that at some point, the town decides to make a decision, is, is make the building handicap accessible, then you, then you have usable space. It began, it'd be more of a comprehensive, large capital project, I understand that. But, at that point, you can, you can, you can be able to use unusable square footage right now.
And our ADA coordinator was gonna come tonight just because she was interested, but unfortunately, she had another engagement, so. She, we, we are working with her to address those type of issues as well, but I just wanted to kinda know how that kind of.
Sure.
Would work with your study. Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
So, the roof exterior envelopes, I noticed that the community center wasn't listed on. I didn't know if that was a comprehensive listing, that overview, because I thought that the community center, you said, the whole envelope needs to, pretty critical.
Yes, it is, but what happened is, is we had sort of, lack of a better term, you sort of make a distinction as, as to what is, the buildings I listed have active water intrusion. The, the community center, I agree that the, the roof is end of its life cycle, it's, it's looking a little tight, tough there. But, but at this point in time, but, but then, when. But at this point in time, but again, when you look at it, I think, when you look at the report, and it might have been just overlooked, but if you're going to go to do the roof exteriors and to look at it, you might get a roofing envelope specialist and again, comprehensively look at all your buildings, because it might be a situation if the town decides to put a capital project to do a roof, you might want to address all your roofs at the same time, you know, economy of scale. When you have an engineer committing it, you can look at all the different roof projects. Again, there's a lot of economy of scale when you're drafting a bid specification because of some of the roofs are the same type of materials, so you can spec it for all things, so. But the community center wasn't, again, there was no active leaking, that's why that was not put on there.
I think it's leaking from this way. From what I...
I know, I know there are leaks in some of the...
No, if you look through the report, yes, we might, I think try to identify a lot.
I'm kind of about, I'm like on maybe page 80 or something.
To add to that, Carol, I went over looked at that building and I was thinking, maybe I can get Joe to power wash the melding stuff that's in the building. I was afraid after I looked closer to the building, I was afraid to power wash it and it would just take the siding right off. It was just so brittle. This thin, and there's holes all over it. I checked, there's holes everywhere, and I went, no, I can't power wash this, the hole thing might fall off. So I mean, that's something that I think we are going to have to look at very soon.
If I may, when you read my report and when you look at, when you say, when you look at life cycle, life cycle obviously doesn't mean you have to, you know, it's a 30-year roof, you've got to replace it 30 years, obviously. But as far as a town and strategic planning for future borrowing, you meld all these together and then you can start to look at your, because in 30 years, you have to assume that you're going to replace that roof and, you know, as from a borrowing perspective or finance perspective. So that's why we put it in there, because there's some equipment in there that, you know, the boiler is a well-maintained boiler. I oversee one building, we have a well-maintained boiler, it was put in 1960. We spent money on it, but it works. Having said that, we have two new, 2020 boilers right next to it because it's a three-boil system. And we kept that one because, again, different issues, operational issues and backup. So everything has its pluses and minuses, but again, you'll see in there, a lot of your equipment has exceeded its life cycle and it's operational, but it's, you're, again, you should be aware that that has reached its life cycle.
Might be on by the time. So it appears that the community hall, the town hall, the pool are all having issues because of each other? And you mentioned the coping being a critical for the pool, but is that happening because of drainage issues?
I, to answer your question specifically, the coping, I would not think so. I, but it would be my impression that it would, that it's not because of the water issues. I think the other issues, you know, matter of fact, you, the town replaced the doors on the pool house in the past several years. And because of all the water coming off the hill circulating and pouring right into the building, well, that grating in the sidewalks pitching into the building hasn't changed, so it's still occurring. So the new doors are going to be obviously subject to premature failing, failure, if not addressed. So that's why I highlighted it as part of, say, in a comprehensive site, you might want to address the swelling issues, the water issues, and then at that point, fix the sidewalk. Again, that's why we say, a lot of these things sometimes are interrelated and that's why we give it a long-term report and say, geez, I can wait a couple of years because in a couple of years, we're going to do a comprehensive town hall. And at that point, we'll address the packham lot, we'll address grading, we'll address site issues, water. Yeah, that makes sense, there might be a sense of planning instead of trying to pick these at one at a time. There's obviously some items, we highlighted some items that you should look at, you with the town should look at it because they are, if not addressed, they'll just create havoc on the building later on and be a warm expense.
So I, I'm sorry, I've done a lot of reading on it. For the town hall specifically, I got through reading it and going, okay, got the whole thing. I didn't look at the financials, honestly, because they're tiny, tiny, tiny print. And I need to get to that. Is that information in there? Because from looking at it quickly, it's like, this is what you really, really need to do. And then it was, if you did everything that we suggested, it would be this. Is there a third for some of the...
I know what you're asking, and what happens is the report, we just basically, because I can't anticipate what people want to do with a building. So we just do it component by component basis. So it's a replacing kind, so you look at replacing kind. Obviously, if you're going to do something comprehensive to the town hall, you wouldn't replace in kind, you would upgrade it significantly and I'm, you know, my impression would be, reconfigure what you would do and how would you reuse the building. So that would incur all the costs that I wouldn't anticipate.
Perfect.
Maybe else have any comments or questions?
I appreciate the thoroughness of the report, and I think it's helpful for us to see, kind of, we can kind of Band-Aid things and plan, you know, the pool door for an example, you know, for an kind of easy example, Band-Aid it, know that every X number of years, we're going to have to replace doors. Longer term, investment is regrading and addressing holistic issues, but in the long term, we're probably going to end up saving costs because it addresses that door issue. We're not buying doors every five years instead of every 20 years or whatever the life cycle is, as well as all the other issues. So I think as we dive into it a little bit more deeply and work with CIPC, I assume, and if there's a building facilities group or anything, and think about what makes sense to finance and how to finance it, and this is powerful tools in that scope as far as, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. And we were able to get some grant funds for the woodhouse roof, so that's one little step. And I know you're talking a lot about maintenance and maybe it's worth having a plan. Because I know in a lot of big facilities, they'll have checkpoints, so like, you know, clipboards at every building so that maintenance are going through and they're checking specific items and maybe if we can work with Joe and the people that are handling maintenance, develop at least some kind of a log to make sure certain things are at least being consistently checked, might help improve to assure that we're at least maintaining until we have the funds to actually start repairing and replacing things. So maybe just having some kind of, like I say, just a checklist that when the staff goes in there, that they just make sure that they check specific things on a regular basis.
And to decide, if you look at the roof, the roof is something, because I have a roof checklist or a developed roof checklist. The town will work when we have MIA, that's the insurance. And so what happens is, MIA has a plan that we have addressed it and doctored it, and MIA uses it, how we present it, because that's how we track it. And we track costs against it because at the end of the year, we present these plans to MIA and they do reduce the rates on the town, some of the insurance rates, or they give a, they give a predile, a predile rebate. That's another office that handles that, that's the town manager. But I have to submit that report, again, we give all our, what we do for the buildings and they use that, so athletes, you see that we're addressing roofs, monitoring roofs, addressing roofs. And we go so far as we back it up with, we just have, we just keep logs of expenditures and stuff like that, so you see we're spending money on it.
Well, I know, like for example, this roof, I mean, there's been a problem with it since the day this building was built and there's been several repairs done to it. So for some reason, we've never been able to get this roof right on this building. It's been an ongoing issue.
So I guess, is there any more questions before I kind of want to summarize or end up here?
No, I mean, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for coming and doing the presentation and the study. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our pleasure, thank you.
And again, I'd like to thank you as well, but I want to sum up here is that, you know, this report helps us develop a strong foundation for the future in terms of planning, but the most difficult part is yet to come. And it really is getting the public behind the kind of repairs we have to do to maintain our facilities. You know, there's a difference in my mind here of being conservative and not spending money, but sometimes you have to spend money to protect your investment. And citizens for, I don't know, 100 years have been investing in our community and our buildings. We need to keep those buildings in pieces shape and bring them up to speed. Otherwise, we're just passing the cost of the future. So I'm hoping that citizens will take the time. I appreciate if you send me a summary report so we can put it up on the various sites. But we got to get people in the community to really understand what we're doing. It's difficult to absorb all this information, so we appreciate the work you did. And if you'd send me the summary or anything else you think might be helpful in kind of convincing the public of why this is important, that would be very appreciative. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you both again, and thank you for coming out. I'm sorry to keep you so late.
We work for Town Government, honestly.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, next on the agenda is Green Communities Grant, Ron.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the town received a grant working with CMRPC. That is in your packet, I think it's approximately 173,000. I was asked a question, I think it might have been by you, Mr. Chairman, or some other member of the board, about the lights at the library, the LED lighting. There was impression that those lights were already done. And the answer to that question and talking to the library director is that some of the lights were done, but not all of the lights were done. So this will finish up the lights and put in a bunch of lights that she doesn't have done and end up saving her money and improving the lighting of the library. So yes, some lighting work was done, but not a lot of it. The DPW, we're going to weatherization, public safety building weatherization, community center weatherization, and then some administrative work, but I think this is going to be very beneficial to the town to use this money to upgrade our buildings at no cost to the town directly, all state money. And will actually, actually reduce our costs in some of these buildings because of the energy efficiency of this program.
So like on, for example, on the community center weatherization, what exactly will be done to help that building? That's a big building, it's only 23,000.
Yeah, I didn't bring the details of each of these work to it, other than they sent out a company, I think it's called ESI Energy Conservation. They went out and they evaluated the building and they look at, you know, the doors and how they're constructed and how to provide ways that energy doesn't escape, so.
So it's not windows or siding?
I don't, I'm not, it could be a little of all of those things. Each building is unique, has its own envelope, so they evaluate the building. They have that all documented and now they take this money, ECI actually hires contractors to come in and look at the work they identify and get the work done, but it's different depending upon the envelope.
I believe, I thought it was grant funding, you might know Skip, to re-site the town hall. And when they re-sized it, they added like insulation, remember when that project? Was that done through grant funds?
That was grants, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, I think that will obviously be something to be beneficial to, like that siding is horrid and the insulation is horrid, and I'm not really sure what you have to qualify to get those kind of grant funds. Was that through...
Yeah, I know, green energy is, that's the exact type of thing. And in other buildings, they have done windows and different things. So I know that when Michael was here, he did a list of these as well. For it comes CMRPC and a bunch of those projects were done, like the lighting of the library. This is the second round of that. And the projects that were identified by ECI for this will almost all be done, the ones that have... You got to remember, it's those projects that have a good return on investment. They may have some projects that have poor return.
I do know that certain things they wouldn't approve because it wasn't going to be worth savings just to justify the cost.
Correct, that's exactly right. So, you know, one of the things they had asked me about with this is, did we want to next look at schools and use this grant potential to help schools? And I was like, I'd rather do the town's first possible, if there's anything left. But if we in fact don't have anything that's going to help us for energy costs, maybe we do want to include at least the Rutland schools.
Some things with the schools on energy, haven't we?
We did solar panels.
Yeah, nothing else on that? I thought we did some efficiency stuff in the past.
It's not as part of this grant process, is it?
No, I know, but I think somehow we had, I thought we had looked at that.
Might have been, I don't remember off the top of my head. I know it wasn't part of Green Communities, but, because I think we were questioning as far as Green Communities because with being the regional school district and school buildings versus town buildings and all of that, so.
I think the intention is, after this year, they're working on incorporating the schools into this program. So if we want to allow money, this money to be used for some schools, we can. But as of right now, it's not allowed. So CMRPC asked me if we would want to do that. I said, yeah, once we finish the town projects, I think we would want to.
Yeah, because we have a lot of needs. And actually, the schools, most of the schools are in some, you know, better shape than some of these older buildings. Although I'm sure they have some needs that could be...
We could design the school money only for the schools that are in Rutland too.
Right.
It's not like we give it to everybody.
You don't understand this, Watchus, the school district yet.
No, I do. I'm just saying.
Those schools don't even belong to us. We can't do any repairs or anything to them.
I think the buildings in Rutland actually didn't belong to us.
They belong to us, but we can't do any repairs, so. We can't do a damn thing to them.
But I mean, that's something down the road, that, you know, efficiency makes sense and I guess that's another, it's another argument for another day. But, so you're just, this is more informational, you can sign off on this, right?
No, I need your approval to sign off. I need your vote to approve it, that's why I said for you. Again, I can apply for all grants, but when we actually get the grant in, and that's the actual contract...
Yeah, I didn't know if we had already done, we did like a blanket approval, but this is for specific...
Just to allow me to sign off.
Carol, you have a question?
Ron, what is the $5,000?
That's administrative costs for all these projects. You have to have people to run the projects and they give you a certain percentage of every grant to administer the project.
Who would be running the projects?
It could be us, it could be part CMRPC, and it also could be part ESI. So depends upon the work that has to be done. But it's mostly, I would think that it would be part of, again, I haven't looked at it closely, but CMRPC for running the project.
And depending on the project, there's probably certain qualifications that you might acquire, like an engineer or something.
And there's only a certain percentage allowed administrative. You can only spend a certain percent, sort of a standard for different...
And all of this, all this goes through you?
Everything comes through my office.
So you review and approve before it all gets paid?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any other comments or anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize Ron to sign the Green Communities grant presented before us. Can you add any more specifics than that?
No, I think that's good.
And so you have a second, any other discussion or questions? Do a roll call vote?
Go ahead.
Illinois, I?
Whitman, I.
And Nichols, I, and currently Mr. Seti is... However, you want to document that? All right. Next is historical commission candidate. We've got another candidate, and we got both the interest and the board support, right?
I sent you, the actual letter from Jennifer Ledger is in your packet. And I emailed you a report from the chairman of the historical, from Peter, to all you guys this afternoon, saying that the board completely supports this nomination, for this appointment.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint Jennifer Ledger to the historical commission.
And is this a three-year, is it a three-year term, do we know, is it?
I did not have a look at it, but...
Is it three-year? Does that be our motion? Yeah.
Just to make sure.
Two, four.
For a three-year term.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and Skip, do you second?
Yeah, I do. Any other discussion? So roll call.
Go ahead.
Illinois, I?
Whitman, I.
And Nichols, I?
Just for information, it looks like according to the website, it's, the vacancy, there was one vacancy, this would fill it, and it would be expiring 2022, based on the website, but I don't, that might be something to check with maybe a need?
Yeah.
Because I remember we expand, we expanded this commission recently, I think in the, it wasn't this the one we expanded in the spring, I think, from like five to seven or something. Um, it's showing one vacancy and it's showing a end date of 2022, but I don't know...
We don't know if that's up to date and this is a new one, right, or if that's...
I mean, this looks like it's...
Did somebody resign and that was what was left on their term?
I don't think so. I think we had expand, I just think we had expanded the number that could sit on the commission.
Every rotated end date.
Yeah, just so that they...
I think it's to make sure that everybody wasn't expiring at once, or maybe that's why. Right. So should we keep determining in the motion or maybe not?
I'm sorry, we should comment?
Yeah, maybe if you want, yeah. Yeah, maybe we'll just do it as an appointment and...
Yeah, let us finalize the term, that's fine.
So you amend, you're fine with it?
I amend mine.
You're fine with it? Everybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, to me, thanks.
Sorry, I was trying to...
Well, no, that's, I just wanted to make sure because I didn't know how...
And I'm not sure either, I...
No? Uh, town council to review the Watchus Regional School District agreement. This request came from the finance committee, right, Ron?
Yeah, this is an interesting question. And frankly, I was trying to think if I would want to even support this motion, a motion to change this. I read the school district agreement, I know that the former chairman has read this district agreement. I think the, it's pretty easy to understand the terms of this agreement, and I think we can have a lawyer read this to tell us what it says. But truthfully, I think if you read it, you can understand what it says. The problem isn't of the language of the, the language is to understand it. The problem is that this school district agreement is totally written in favor of the school committee where in order to change the agreement, you know, you have to have the recommendation of school committee. where in order to change the agreement, you know, you have to have the recommendation of the school committee and stuff. I'm not sure the, a lawyer giving an opinion as to what this said has any value to me. I don't know what the former chair thinks. But I just don't see how to get from the legal...
I know that the finance committee was looking for something specific, right, as far as the review?
I don't see any way to get out of this contract that, I mean, there's ways to get out of it, but they require like two-thirds voted at the town meeting. I don't see any rational way, reasonable way to get out of it. I just don't know what attorney would add.
Yeah, the conversation, this stemmed from a conversation that FinCom had maybe about a month ago. And the intent is in no way to get out of the agreement. I think the, the focus of the conversation was, is there any language that can be put in regarding a max, uh, I guess levy amount or, or raise amount for the numerical portion of the budget? So it wasn't, we had made suggestions, the towns all did, and all the suggestions were the same about changing some of the language in certain portions of the contract, which would give the towns more say about, um, you know, different aspects of it that were minor. But again, the intent was really just to look at what the options were in terms of fiscal prudence.
So, so they're looking to see if you can cap it, so...
So, so the answer, in my opinion, I'll give my opinion, I think, clearly the answer is yes. You can write up a motion or an amendment to this contract that does whatever you want to do. The problem is, is that in order to get it changed, to change the school disagreement, the motion has to be recommended by the school committee.
Right.
And they're not gonna recommend it. So, I mean, I don't think any lawyer to tell you you can do that because you can. The problem is, how do you get the school committee to vote to recommend a motion they're clearly against? And, and, you know, paying a lawyer to write up something this school committee's gonna just say no to seems to me a waste of little dollars. If, if you could find a way to change it without the school committee, I'd, I'd be agreeable. But I, I've read it over and over and I don't see how we could change it without the processes established.
I think Karen, Karen's usually on, I think she's away this week. I, I don't know if the committee would be agreeable just to defer to at least hear from the chair with the final, just to clarify what they're asking. I hate to just disregard their request to make sure we're not clear what they're looking at.
Well, I think that the motion at the meeting was clear and the intent voiced by FinCom was clear. I think we just have to check the language in that motion and the conversation.
So...
Okay, so, I mean, they were quite specific on what they wanted reviewed.
So, so let me read the, the wording, because it's really clear. If you look at section fourteen was amended, which is what we're talking about, amending the actual agreement, right? And I, again, I keep reading this, because I've, I've tried numerous ways to think about how to do this. This agreement, and this is under fourteen point two, this agreement may be amended by recommendation of this committee and approval of member towns of the district by majority voted annual town or special town meeting, provided that not more than one member town disagrees subject to approval by the town hall. So we could write fifty different amendments that do whatever we want to do, but the school committee doesn't recommend it, it never gets to go to town meeting. To me, that sums up the major problem here is that the school committee has just way too much power to decide what, how to amend or not amend this agreement. That's why I think I go, well, what would the attorney, the attorney will tell me, oh yeah, you can make changes and stuff, but the school committee asks to recommend it. So I, that, that's...
I guess they're looking for an opinion to see, is there any way out of us doing it?
I was wondering, are they, they, I think that, are they looking for more guidance as to, is there a way that we can do this? Not, clearly the document said, we can all read the document, we know what the document says. But what are our legal, are, do we have any legal options to address this concern?
Right, because I mean, I think every time this has been reviewed, I think that's the, 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 everybody comes to the conclusion, well, you can't do anything because the school committee's gonna vote on it anyway. So we end up just kind of going with the agreement. And I guess they're looking to see if there's any way legally that there can be anything tweaking without going through the whole school committee or do something different. Because it hasn't been addressed and this obviously is a, the huge budget issue, issue for us. So I think they just want to at least see if they're, make sure they eliminate any options of doing something different to try to control the spending.
If, I, I would make a suggestion through the chair that what I think would be most fruitful for both the two boards, our board and FinCom, and the public, would be to have this contract reviewed by legal in preparation to say, this is what we want looked at and then have a joint meeting with the two boards and town council present to answer any questions they might have, so that everybody's on the same page and so that the public kind of knows the, the breadth and scope of what we're talking about and what the intent is.
So, just to follow up to that. So the question, like I know what questions I would ask of this. Does the board have specific questions it wants me to have legal? Listen, I don't mind if your board wants these council reviews, I'm okay with it. But there's a board of specific things it wants to ask the attorney? Do you want to give me that? Do you want me to do it?
I think, what we, what I would suggest doing is go back to the FinCom chair and have her take some time at their next meeting for specific questions. I know the motion was specific. Um, but if we want to send specific questions to town council, and then this board also set a, uh, an end date to where we can all send our questions to the chair to have them forwarded to you then to go to town council, and then we can have a joint discussion.
I, I would love to find an answer to this question because this is gonna be murderous every year. And I, I am frustrated that this process doesn't give us any control over it whatsoever. And if we can find a way to get some minor control over this process, it...
And I think it's worth us trying to look at any other options that are all available because this has been, like you said, just on and on and on. And who knows, maybe something was missed or maybe there is something more that we can do that we, we haven't looked at yet. So yeah, Ron, if you can talk to Karen about getting, and if she wants to do a joint meeting, she's more comfortable with that. I'd be more than happy that we can set something up.
Yep, so I would ask you guys just to give me your individual questions and I'll ask the same of the chairman. And we'll address them and, and do you want to take one more look at it? Or do you want me to just take your questions, the FinCom questions, and address the attorney?
Well, I had suggested changes. I don't necessarily have questions as part of that working group that I'm on. And you have those, I can resend those. But, um, again, it's gotta go through the school committee. But I think to Lyndon's point and to Leah's point, we're not necessarily looking at the amendments in the contract. I think we're looking at, at if we have any further options regarding fiscal prudence, so...
Okay, I'll send you the amendments and I'll kind of work from there.
These are what's creating our problems and is there any way that we can have a more beneficial relationship than...
Yeah.
Yeah, and one of my suggestions, and it's, I think Paxton had the same, is, you know, when you've got ten Holden committee members, and you've got two or three Rutland and two or three, you have to have the entire Holden say yes to even undo or, or, you know, it's just like four towns against one as far as this, the setup of how many people.
Yeah, the, every town, every town except, well, maybe Holden did two, but they, they put in, uh, a request to the school committee to reduce the size of the school committee. But also, um, you know, I think that your proportional representation is gonna remain the same. But just note that Rutland will be picking up an additional school committee member um, in the next year or two because of that population shift. I don't know how else to get around that.
And I think Holden is quickly facing some budget concerns in the, in the coming years also. So in the past very long time, they haven't had those budget, budget concerns. So it's not been, it's kind of been us with budget concerns. So if there can be a little bit more, um, cohesive group, united front from the five towns and saying that it's a sustainability issue for the long term rather than, you know, beauty or whatever.
So responding to that, so I've had conversations with Peter. And one of the things that Peter's doing in Holden is, first and foremost, they believed this year, they just barely made it without an override. And his position to me clearly was that next year, he believes strongly and the board select will believe strongly, that they're gonna have to put forward an override in Holden next year, which is really aggravating them. Peter has got, his select board has been very vocal as of late, in the past they had been. And they have worked to create a committee, uh, of town administrators, town manager, across the five towns along with a select board member. And Peter asked me to set up the meeting, because I've been setting up the meetings with all of them. And I, I put in the town admin, the town administrators report, I gave you the date of that meeting. I think it's next week. And I'm gonna meet with the administrators to figure out what our steps are. And then we're gonna meet with the selectmen and try to figure out how to move forward on this. So I think for the first time, there's an early engagement on this issue to look at the budget and to try to get a handle out of it instead of being, you know, responsive to whatever happens in the strongest last minute. You want to try to be more proactive. So which you can be expecting, because I think you're the representative on the board, you'll be expecting soon a call to sort of that kind of meeting with everybody. But the first part's gonna be figure out exactly what we want to say to you guys and how we want to start the process. And Peter, this is the first time, as I understand it, that Holden's taken an active view to, to really be part of this battle.
All right, so we'll leave it, um, like I said, you can talk to the finance committee and move forward on that. Um, then we, next we had a, um, transfer request. Now, we have a copy in here, but didn't the finance committee already review and sign it?
They voted it already, yeah. It's been approved by finance, it's just gonna go through us or...
Do we have to read each one individually or can we approve?
I think you can do them all together if you want to, as long as the motion is entitled for the four transfers. Just read each of them out.
Yeah.
For each of the four and go that way.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the four appropriation transfers. It's written the first dated June twenty-fifth.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, before you do that, because maybe this was a late add to the agenda. Mr. Chairman, I think first, before we make the motion, you're required to vote to add it to the agenda. You can't just say it's an emergency reasons it was added because we have to get it in prior to the closing of the year. So if you do that before we do this...
So if I get a motion based on the...
I'll make a motion to add this item to the agenda. It is an emergency item, uh, because of the, uh, the nature of the funding request. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll...
Aye.
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 Okay.
All right, so I'll continue my motion to approve the four appropriation transfers. The first dated June twenty-fifth in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars. The second dated June twenty-fifth in the amount of two dollars and forty-six cents. The third dated June twenty-fifth in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three dollars. And the fourth dated June twenty-fifth in the amount of forty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
Like, we probably should say it be transferred to the elections, um, whether that I can even read them right. Elections, something, services.
Elections, purchase, services.
Purchase services.
All transfers, to amend my motion, to note that all transfers, uh, will be going into the election purchases services account.
And you have a second, right?
Yeah, you got a second.
And do we have any other discussion? Okay, roll call, vote.
Lock, eye.
Fincom, eye.
Mr. City, eye.
Whitman, eye.
And Nichols, eye. Do you have an original of this to sign, Ron, or because we all just have copies?
Um, everybody has the copies. Uh, I would just grab any of the copies and sign it. I don't think it makes a difference as long as you have a signed version. So take your copy, Mr. Chairman, and give it around and then just, um, pull it out of the packet.
Well, I, do you mind, I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. Is that okay?
Maybe not to do with the transfer.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's it. The only other comment I would make is that, you know, going forward, under, um, discussions, we're gonna start listing, Timica did a nice job, thank you very much, of summarizing our goals and our objectives. So after the next meeting, we'll just list those. And if anybody has updates, we'll just allow for updates in those specific areas. But, yeah, go ahead, Leah.
Um, first, I wanted to congratulate the Rutland Little League, the ten and eleven-year-olds, for an awesome, amazing run. And they made it to the state championship game. So what a great, great experience for them and for the town. And it's great to, to see our little town getting that, that recognition. So great job. Um, and I also wanted to push, um, our, do our final push for the master plan survey. Um, if you haven't yet done the survey, um, master, uh, rutlinemasterplan.com for the survey. Um, we're trying to get, do that final push. So anybody can share with, continue to share with their groups and everything. Just get as much feedback as possible because we want to make sure it's a diverse, you know, so...
And I want to echo Leah on the success of the, of the baseball. That was, that was pretty good. It was pretty exciting to watch on Facebook. They did very well and we're very proud.
I thought you gave him two.
Does anybody, um, anybody have anything else or do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alma Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.